Their change is the adoption of something new, and that's the Public Safety Chaplain at $1,000 annual stipend. I have asked Father Paul Boudreau from St. Mary's Church to be our new chaplain with a public thank you once again to Reverend Bill Hodge, who passed away just about a year ago, November. And Bill really started the whole concept of having a chaplain in our town. And he did that for no compensation, but was very generous with his time and very committed to the concept that public safety requires to have some assistance in front of the chaplain. And we thank Bill and his family for all the work that he did. In this case, I have asked that Father Paul meet a minimum of twice a year with the fire department, a minimum of twice a year with the police department, and be available whenever we have emergencies or terrible tragedies that occur, and also on an as-needed basis. And I think for our personnel that work particularly as first responders, it's important to be able to have someone that they can pick up the phone and talk with and not have to go through a 1-800 number or go through any supervisor. And Father Paul has agreed to do that, and is honored to serve. He's done this in the past. He was a chaplain in a hospital, and he's also served, I believe, in the military himself, as well as other capacities. So those are the two changes that are here. All the other positions remain as had been the last time he passed it. So I would ask for a motion to approve the pay plan.
What's the difference between a clerk one and a clerk two?
A clerk two may have a little more experience or do a little more work. We don't have anybody in that right now, Ben.
So my thought is, why don't we keep a clerk one, and if you feel your person is now a clerk two, move them up to clerk two and keep clerk one at 15 and change. That way, there's a difference between a clerk one and a clerk two financially and experience. Right? Either that, or get rid of the clerk one. I don't want the same dollar amount for a clerk one or clerk two. That doesn't make any sense. So we either...
You don't have to say that.
Aren't you moving it to 1940?
Clerk two is $20.80.
Basically, the same amount. So I personally would like to keep the clerk one position. If you feel this person now has the experience to go to a clerk two, so be it, and I'm okay with that.
I wasn't going to promote them, but...
I don't know what else comes along with that, but I just feel like if we're going to have a starting point, clerk one and clerk two, there's clearly a difference between the two. There would be very little difference between the two if we increase that number.
How do the others feel?
These are part-time positions?
Yes.
Clerk one and clerk two work less than 20 hours?
Yes. 10 hours is what the clerk one is.
10 hours. Okay.
A week.
I see this as a one position that's open and one position that's filled.
Well, it says positions. We don't really have anything within the budget for a clerk two right now.
Okay.
But it's there in the event.
It's there because it was there before?
Yes.
Okay. So the only thing we're spending is 1940?
Yes.
And it was 15?
Yes.
So we're talking $4.
Yes.
$40 a week.
You can make it another number. I just thought because it was consistent.
I like the number, but I don't think that it's an exorbitant amount of money that we have to worry about.
But there's no real difference between a clerk one and clerk two then?
What, do you want to raise the clerk two?
No.
Why are you going from 15 to 19?
No, 15 to 1940.
You don't have to. That's the proposal. If you want to make it something else, go ahead. That's why I bring it to you. But I was trying to be consistent with the van driver, who this person helps, and I wouldn't say overseas, but helps schedule the van driver, and it would be consistent with the recording clerks that we have.
Okay. All right.
That was the thought.
Yeah, I mean, I'm okay staying at the 1940 and making it consistent. That seems like it's, you know, I'm fine with that. It's not much of a difference, but if you ever wanted to bring somebody up to a two, you could. It's a little something, but...
Whatever the pleasure the board is.
Do we even need a clerk two?
Yeah, we might not even need it. I mean, it's not bad to have it there if we're not using it, but I think bringing the other ones up to be consistent is probably a fair thing to do.
If you want to take off the clerk two, you can. I mean, it's up to you.
Why do you leave?
I'd feel better getting rid of clerk two if we're going to do that. A dollar forty difference between clerk one and clerk two, to me.
I'm thinking that if you ever needed a clerk two...
I'll come back to you.
That we would then maybe make that person 1940.
Yeah.
Because it's similar work, I think.
How about you just call it clerk?
Clerk.
How about that, Ben?
That would be better. Now you're getting where I was going with this.
Or you could have two clerks, but 1940 would be...
Why don't we just call it clerk?
Clerk. Done. We have one category now.
Then we'll take off clerk two, and clerk one will be 1940. Does that sound...
Very little discrepancy between the two.
Are you okay with the chaplain stipend?
I have a question about the chaplain.
Yes.
Are you aware he's like only in town like part of the week?
Well, he told me Thursday through Sunday and sometimes through Monday.
Okay.
This is not a full-time...
All right.
The stipend obviously is not for a full time, but he is reachable by cellphone at any time, is what he told.
Okay. Yeah, because usually I found him to be around Friday to Monday morning. And I mean, unless there's some stuff going on during the week, like a holy day or something, then he's around. I just wanted to make sure, because you commented, you know, an emergency or something.
Oh, we're going to call him.
I know when my father dropped dead in the middle of the week, the town chaplain was up the house, but if Father Paul's in Rhode Island on Wednesdays, he's not going to be able to go to somebody's house if they drop dead on a Tuesday or a Wednesday. Just died. Died. That's all. I just wanted to make sure everybody knew he's not in Portland all week. But he's a great guy. I think he'll do a good job.
I think that's a fair stipend.
And then this grounds crew leader, $3.78.
This has been for a long time, probably about 25 years. It used to be Carl Johnson's position. Now Nate Strikears is in that position. The position is a consolidated grounds program that we have, so the grounds department takes care of the grounds for the Board of Education, as well as general town government and all parks and recreation. So the gentleman that has that position gets paid by the Board of Education for that position that the Board of Education has and funds. This is an additional amount of the $3 and change on an hourly basis for that person who's in a different union than the three people that are in the grounds crew. So he is paid to be the supervisor of those three people that are paid for by the town. So it's this consolidation, so we pay that amount per hour while that position is paid for by the Board of Education. That's not that position's entire salary, because we don't pay the entire salary. And it's considered a non-union pay plan because we don't oversee that person in any town union. So he's being paid for by supervisor.
The number just stuck out there. Like, it seems like, oh, that's like 1970 wages.
That's been there for 20 years.
Good question. It's very much below minimum wage.
Right. Any other questions? So was there a motion made?
I don't think so. I'll make a motion to approve the hourly part-time specialist and seasonal employee schedule as amended.
So you want to say what they are?
Sure. I guess the only thing that's amended on here that's amended from the proposals would be eliminate the clerk two position. No, just eliminate the clerk two position.
And then the clerk one will become $19.40?
Right.
And the public safety chaplain. And there's a second by Lou? Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Are we done here?
We're just getting warmed up.
Okay. Resolution, fourth quarter transfers. So the audit for fiscal year '18 is going on right now. We have applied for an extension because, as some of you may know, you may not all know, our finance director is on a planned medical leave. So Tom will return likely by the middle of January. So he, before he went on his planned leave, he made sure that he had the general fund ready for the auditors to review, and he found that there needed to be $38,070 in transfers from the fire marshal to part-time payroll of $570 for additional hours of increased activities. Excuse me. The fire marshal would get an additional $570. That's an increase. The town engineer, which is under the Public Works, $5,000 increase for additional permitting and public works matters. And snow removal, due to overtime, would have an increase of $32,500. That totals $38,070. And the transfer decrease comes out of the town contingency, which is the $38,070. This is one of the lowest fourth quarter transfers that we've had in a while, so that's what Tom said we needed this year. It looks like the budget, while we were given, as you know, we struggled terribly in fiscal year '18 with the state of Connecticut in terms of education cost sharing money and the reductions that they made mid-year from the time the governor in 2018, February of 2018, told us how much money we would get in education cost sharing, which we use for the budget, until they actually passed the budget, was a difference of about $700,000, which is substantial for Portland in that a mill is about $846,000. So I, from the very beginning of October, when the fiscal year started, I told the finance director that he would not be able to do any extra spending and that he should hold the line. We had some positions that were frozen. We did not fill, and it appears that the year will end to the positive by about $40,000 to $50,000. So some revenues, remember, we changed the way that the bond that we passed in 2016 would be funded. That helped us because we had budgeted to spend money in '18, about $100,000, if I'm not mistaken, at least that amount, that we did not spend, so that helped. Some revenues came in that were better than anticipated, and it was really holding the line and not spending the expenditure. So I think that's one reason you don't see a lot of changes within the budget. And I have to give Tom a lot of credit for being able to control the budget so that we don't anticipate when the audit is finished, any deficit, but rather a very small surplus.
I'm okay with these transfers. Could you double-check to make sure, and you're not going to know it now. Too bad Tom's not here.
Yep.
You can tell we missed him.
Yep.
That nothing else comes out of the town engineer, public works engineering?
What do you mean, nothing else comes out?
I want to make sure the only person paid...
That's going in. Right?
My question is, what comes out of that account? And I'm not going to read the number. You can all read the number. I want to know, I want to make sure that that account pays Jeff Jacobson, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And I want to make sure that's all that comes out of that account. I want to know what comes out of that account. I don't mind transferring $5,000. That's what it says, Jeff Jacobson, $5,000 for...
I don't understand what you mean by comes out then.
I want to make sure, I want to know what's paid out of that account. Is that just Jeff Jacobson?
You weren't here.
No, that was last year's budget, but yeah, that's common.
Okay, just want to...
Those are the other projects that you can take over out of, that might go to different agencies or project lines.
I don't want to go down any... I just want one question answered. That number, who do we pay out of that account? And if it's more than Jeff Jacobson, I want to know, because then I want that spelled out here. That's all.
I'm trying to think.
I don't want to put you on the spot. I can get an email. We're good. Let's move along. I'm fine with it. It says $5,000, public works. I'm fine with that. I just want to, for my own good...
Would surveying come out of there?
That would go through his office, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Same thing. Same. I'm okay with that. I'm... I'm just trying to see where our money's going. That's it.
And special projects, Ben? If they worked on the sidewalk project, for example, that doesn't come out of here. Even though Jacobson is doing the sidewalk work, that doesn't come out of here. That comes out of special projects.
Okay. That's all.
Good question.
Don't look into it more than it is.
And I think Lou had a question.
Yeah, I had also a question on the engineering part. Is that, is it $5,000 last year? Has it been that almost every year? Do we, if we look back, is there always a $5,000 or $6,000 need? Are we funding engineering properly? That's my question.
No, I think that, you know, we'll talk, we'll have a really good discussion about that in this year's budget, because I think that might bring some opportunity to the table, and we need to start working with that, because there are a lot of things that this board does throughout the year that affect those lines. And you can see, if you go back and study previous years, you'll see where you should be on certain light items for engineering. And you will see that there's safety projects and things that come up throughout the year that you might want to fund in the budget so that you're more accurate on those numbers, and you will see less of these transfers at the end of the year. I mean, I understand putting a budget together, you try to do it as soon as you can, but if you have history going back that proves that you're in need of those resources, then you should probably fund.
And the other thing I, you know, I've had discussion with, you know, board members as well, is that right now, we seem to have Jacobson doing most of our engineering, but if there's a project that needs more than, let's say it costs $50,000 or more, do we go to bid on those, or do we go out and find different engineering companies that could maybe do the job for us a lesser amount?
Well, I mean, Lou, I can only speak on behalf of the seven months that I'm here, but I think I've done that with some of the projects that are being done now. And we also solicited architectural firms for your building. So we are, I think, I would say, if you were to ask me personally as, you know, in business, that we're doing everything justice as far as reaching out. You have a lot of projects going on, and you have a lot of players that are working there. And with that said, each, you know, firm may have an expertise in certain areas. And just to let you know, I just recently reached out with an RFQ for wastewater, period. That's it. For help with that. But I think that's good, because that gives an opportunity for you here as a board to see what opportunities are out there as far as cost for engineering services, which are really important.
Okay. And just because you brought it up again, Lou, I want to make sure it's on the record. Whenever you, if we want to start doing that and we want to pick which projects we're going out to bid, we should be doing it across the board. That would also be with the town attorney. And obviously, I don't recommend this path. I'm just reiterating what I said the other time you brought this up. I think one thing we could point out, Susan sent it out, our town engineer just got an award. I think we've had good luck. I think we have a good working relationship with him. And having said that, I think we also, with the town attorney, same thing. So if you're going to go down that road, like I said before, we're going to do it consistently, and we're going to do it across the board, or we're not going to do it at all. That's all. Thank you.
And I will point out, as Ben said, we do have a number of different law firms that we do use.
Yep.
And I do try to bring that to you. Now, you have appointed different firms for labor. You have a different firm for general land use. You have a firm that occasion is used for zoning Board of Appeals. You have another firm that we use for higher-level contracts. And Shipman and Goodwin is that firm, and we are, I'm going to be using them for the redo of the contract at Brownstone Exploration and Discovery Park. They did the fixed assessment agreement for us. And then, of course, we have Shipman and Goodwin also for our bond counsel. Now, at any time, you can go out and look for new attorneys, that's, or new engineers, or any consulting group that we utilize, and we will do that if you wish to do that. So there's one project that we started on, and I think I mentioned this to Lou, and I'll mention it to all of you, and that is the Spring Street project. So on my desk, there is a quote from Jacobson, which he always does, he always gives to us for these special projects, what he anticipates spending, and he typically spends less than what he says on those, I guess they'd be proposals that he sends to us. So I will be signing that, because he did all of the work on that project, and he'll be doing all of the oversight on that project. When you bring in another engineer, sometimes they might say, well, you did that wrong. At this point, I will be signing that, just to let you know that. I think that's the only big project other than, well, we're going to have to also go out to bid for the sidewalks on Main Street, but I don't think we need design. Is that right, Ben?
No. So we're working on that whole change order related to the grant that we received to restore that section of Main Street between the post office. So we get to take that 1,200 feet, off the top of my head, the sidewalk that was in that proposal, out of and move it to Main Street, where we were fixing sidewalks. So what we're doing is, we're correcting the plan now. We have to work with our current contractor on a change order to move from Fairview to Spring Street, which is now in our grant, to another location, which he has been wonderful about. He thinks that the opportunity to go to the one location is going to be good for him. And we'll work on that change order. So it's going to come up with, we have to do a walkthrough. I can figure out how many driveway aprons I have there versus here, and how it's all going to work out as far as sidewalk versus pavement. And we hope to get, if we do a straight line instead of piecework in that area, which I would recommend, and a five-foot sidewalk, a five-foot width sidewalk, which we had proposed to continue as well, we could get very close to Harvard. So those numbers will come to you. There'll be suggestions that maybe we get to Harvard and find a way to do that as far as how close we are. So we're working on that. And then, at the same time, we'll be trying to transition the engineering work that's already been done on one side of the road into the state program, which they always request different ways of doing, which we think they're going to agree with the plan that we've done. So we'll save some money there as well, because some of that's been done. So we hope that the new and what's being transferred over will offset, and we'll be in good shape there. But that is in the process now, because we have to get that change order and the works for Spring for our current project, so he can plan for that, and then we can get out to bid and, or the engineering done, so we can get out to bid for the new grant that we received on both sides of Main Street and that area. So there's a lot going on. So you gained quite a bit, about 1,200 feet of sidewalk by receiving that grant, which is a huge improvement.
This is a grant that our economic development consultant, Mary Dickerson, wrote, and we did not anticipate it being funded, but it has been funded, and it's about $250,000 worth of sidewalk work that the state will pay.
So that whole, this is all transitioning into signaling that's going to be replaced by the state of Connecticut in the area of all those crosswalks. They're going to replace all the signaling, the devices that are holding them. The traffic lights will be replaced at Fairview and Melstex Avenue, and as well as down in front of the post office. So there's a lot going on in Main Street as far as improvements. So that's going to help with every pedestrian traffic safety we have, and it works on that. Long overdue for the signaling, especially events like that.
My only two cents would be, I get why you want to go to five feet. It's easier to clear in the winter, but a lot of these people that are shoveling, it's going to be harder on them. And then we could probably get 20% more in length, so maybe just end the grading.
But in the states, we'll be going four or five, or some fool them.
I'll leave it up to you.
Those numbers might make the difference to get to Harvard too, so...
Yep.
Maybe the town beautification committee come up with that.
So the proposed five feet is the standard for the grant?
Okay.
So we'll be stopping at Russell, and then we'll be going to four feet if we do that. So we, the recommendation has always been five, especially in that type of area, so...
So is there a motion to approve the transfers as presented?
Thank you.
Can I ask another question? How much was in this contingency?
$100,000.
Okay.
That was the original budgeted amount. Has there been a motion on this?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Ralph. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ben. Any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. The next is the authorizing resolution for federal fiscal year 2018 State Homeland Security Grant. This is something that I believe goes through Capital Region Council of Governments, and Don Guin, our emergency management director, attends those meetings, and on occasion, we do receive some monies from them. Right, Don?
Yes.
What sorts of dollars have they funded? Or what have they funded, is what I should say.
They have funded all the clothing and the supplies for the survey.
Which is the community emergency response to it. So in order to participate in that grant, we have to have the authorizing resolution by the selectmen. Is there a motion to approve and waive the reading?
So moved.
I'll second it.
I'm going to say it was made by Ben and seconded by Lou.
Oh, yeah, that's right. He said it at the same time. No, it's okay.
Any discussion? Questions? Anybody have any questions on this? Typically comes once a year, I think. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions? Motion carries. The next, and this is a Public Works, Proposed Ordinance for Fats, Oils, and Grease, better known as FOG, regulations. And there is a proposed ordinance here that is for your review. Bob, do you want to make some comments on that?
Yeah. Just briefly comment on it. Maybe you'll have time to review it.
So this goes back to July, when I first started. We had some changes with our businesses that basically accumulate fats, oils, and grease as part of their restaurants. And when we were changing hands at one particular restaurant, Chatham Health Sanitarian came in and asked about our FOG program. It didn't exist. So this program has specifically been put together with the purpose of protecting our sanitary system from fats, oils, and greases, reducing the potential for blockages, which we see often, and that's usually what it's caused from, because we can circle around those areas, and that's where our blockage is from. So with that said, what it does is puts an ordinance in place so that we can inspect those facilities, which we have few in town, maybe a handful, and make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, so that they prevent putting those fats and greases into our sanitary system, which could then jeopardize a blockage, which would affect a lot of our residents that are on the system. And that's what it would do. If we catch it early enough, it's usually a blockage at that facility or one that's close to it. If it doesn't and clogs much farther down the span, it could affect residents that are on the system. So we continually clean our system, but we do have those areas that we have to clear, which is not a nice task. So by doing this, it gives us an opportunity to go and inspect those facilities. And what we would do is simply go in, look at, make sure that they have the proper, you know, system, the R-G-R-U system that separates those fats from what's going into our sanitary system, and that they maintain those, that they have them cleaned, depending on the size of them, they have them pumped, and they keep records, so that we can review those on a yearly basis, to make sure that they're conforming to statute that has been placed. These programs are everywhere. You can go online. You can look FOG program up in every town around us. They all exist. We just haven't got to that point. So what this is, is something for you to look at. This is very basic. I looked at probably 10 different towns. And when you get into the fee structure, it's really for penalties related to really not adapting to the program, which could cause havoc to our system. I don't see that that will happen. We've made some improvements here already. Most do comply, but it gives us an opportunity to go in and help them, make sure they maintain their systems, which would be a yearly inspection. So with that said, that is all negotiable on how you want to work that, but I took some of the lowest prices that were out there that were offered, and I just developed this program for fees and timelines, and you'll have a chance to look at that. We put a $50 application fee per year. That includes the inspection from our chief operator or delegate at the sewer plant. So he'd have an opportunity here, she would have an opportunity to go in to facility on a yearly basis, make sure that they're keeping records, take a look at when the last time it was cleaned and pumped, and really look at it and make sure it's, it's compliant. That's what that will do. There are a few that don't charge. They charge much more on the violation side of it, because they have 30 to 40 restaurants in their communities. So they get it on that end. Here, we don't have many. If we wanna try to cover the cost of that simple inspection for our employee and the permitting and application fee, that was probably the lowest price that I saw. But that's an opportunity for you to look at. But the meat and potatoes of this entire ordinance is really there. It represents just about everything that's out there. We used some templates for the application that everyone used, so we didn't have to go too far to develop this. We spent, my admin, Laura did a great job on this for me, and she basically took a five or six-town cut-up that I had, and we put one together for us that I thought worked for our size community, and, you know, what we're looking for. And to be able to work with our, our restaurants, our facilities that are providing that stuff that fall under this category, and that we can assure that our health district knows that we're doing this, as well as the state. It is, this, I just took some training last week regarding reporting when we have sewer issues. This is right in the first sheet. Do you have a current FOG? So.
This would not apply to anybody on their, on septic, a restaurant on septic system?
Uh, no. No, it wouldn't, because they do not, you're absolutely correct, Ben. This is only for the ones that are hooked up to our service.
Sorry.
That is correct.
If I may go right into another question?
Sure. Go ahead.
I think it's fine, other than a thousand dollar fine if there's a, I'm reading it as though if there's a backup, correct, minimum? My thought processes, a restaurant changes hands, the pipe's three-quarters clogged, the new guy now is complying, and it's great, but it still clogs, he's gonna get whacked a thousand dollars, he or she, so, I don't like that.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a good point there, and I think it's all related to, like, past inspections, if there's violations there, and then you can specifically determine that that was caused by the lack of. So, yeah, that's vague. We can change that, we can put verbiage in there to state that there has to be three prior, you know, to get to that lumber, but, yeah.
I want something, because it wouldn't be fair, we don't know unless we're gonna pay to inspect the pipes going into each one of these buildings, which I don't recommend, but you can see where that could become a problem. Other than that, I think, I'm okay with this.
Yeah, it could, and we, we can add that, we can, basically...
That's all I'm looking for. Something that, something that could, you know, if you have a pipe that's three-quarters clogged already...
We make that determination as we're out there.
So somehow get some language in there that protects that, I'm fine with it.
If you refuse to put the devices in, if you come back and inspect them each and every year and there's no cleaning, then, then, yeah, there's, there's fines that should be leveled so that you participate. The other stuff is there, I think, as just a guidance, maybe as a...
Yeah.
A way for, you know, those facilities to make sure they do their work.
And if they were all running pipes, I'd have no issue with that.
It's kind of enforcement. Right.
That's where I'm at, but...
Well, and with that said, new ownership, new application, that would be the first thing that we recommend that they do, is to get those inspected to make sure they're clean, so they're not taking over someone else's issue. So you'll see in here that a new applicant, a new ownership would have to come in and apply for a new application, and then we, we would be part of that process with them. And we would suggest that they do some testing and make sure that they're, they don't have any issues that they're gonna potentially be taking over from someone else. We're small, but we could grow. We have a lot of things that are going on here, so this is a good ordinance to probably have in place prior to that, so that if we have businesses and stuff that are coming in with development, that they would know that this program exists, and that right away, when they're making changes, they can make those. To make some of the changes after the fact is difficult, it's more expensive, so.
Sounds good.
Do you wanna send this to a public hearing? I got some, some comments.
I would. Yeah, that sounds good.
All right, so I'm suggesting that we put it on the January 19th, 2019, a gen, a public hearing at seven o'clock.
And if there is only a handful of people that this would affect, maybe could we notify them? If there's only five or 10? I just think that would be a good, just...
I would need to, we would, Michelle could certainly do that, if we knew who it would affect.
But I'm only one vote, so unless everybody else likes that idea...
You know, you know who would note, Ben, would be all of the, maybe, look at the, the food license?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, hasn't this gone along with the food license?
Chatham Health will know, as well as their chief operator of our sewer department.
That would also give you the ones on septic, though, we gotta be careful, like the Winchester, the golf course, the other golf course.
Jim Lynch would know.
We have a lot on, yeah, so, that's fine. If there's only a handful, I just think, I like transparency, I like, hey, we're not trying to do anything, you know, it's...
We're gonna be impacted.
Yeah, but it's a good, I think it's a good, yeah, so, okay.
Okay, is there a motion for a public hearing for this on the 19th?
So moved.
At seven o'clock?
Second. Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Made by Ben, seconded by Jim. Public hearing on the 19th of January 2019 at seven o'clock. And we'll send it the way it is. And, and if there's another public hearing, we'll do it, and we'll get this out to those individual businesses that would be affected.
Sounds right.
Next item has to do with, this has to actually go to a town meeting, a resolution for a lease agreement between the town of Portland and the YMCA. This is something we've done many, many times. We're looking for a one-year extension, as opposed to, I think in the past, it's been five years.
Yeah, and keep in mind, the reason why we're doing that is...
Is there a mistake here?
No mistake.
It says, yeah, the, this document says 2022.
Oh, yeah.
What do you want it to read? Do you want it to go that long, and then, or do you want it to go just to February 28th, 2020?
Twenty, 2020 would be consistent and fine with what our strategy is, in terms of getting out of Ingersoll and making use of the new fields. So I don't think...
Yeah, we could go...
We could temper, well, again, what you're doing is you're, you're sitting in the Spring, which is a lighter, sacker schedule, and there are workarounds.
I think Michelle had put 2022. The contract says 2024. We need to change that.
No, they're, well, go with the longer one. It says we can terminate this in 90 days, written notice.
You're right, that's, that's what I was thinking.
Go with the long, go with the longer one.
What do you think, 24, Ben?
Sure.
24?
Sure, go with, yeah. And then just leave it alone, and then if we do, we may change our mind and say, you know what, it's nice having access to keep, so, I would say, we can get out in 90 days.
Just remember, to continue, we did this with this distinct factor, was we don't wanna be maintaining other fields, so, I mean, I don't care if you put the date and we just get out of it, it's fine. But that is really the strategy, so.
And I hope we achieve your goal.
And we, and we would explain that certainly to our generous partners, the YMCA.
Yes.
So I would suggest that we change the resolution to read March 9th, March 1, 2019, expiring February 28th, 2024. And all the rest remains the same.
And actually, to that point, just one point, I'm not sure if the Y may have trouble with that. Even though we could tell them that we're gonna get out...
How much is the lease?
They may not want to sign it, knowing that we could say...
The lease is zero.
I know, but it's, it's use of the field, and we're gonna say we're gonna use it, and they may want us out, so, that's the only reason why.
Yeah. Well, I will, I will ask them. I actually put a, put an email out, and I haven't heard back yet from the YMCA.
Not that it, maybe not make much difference, but the last day of February in 2024 is February 29th.
It does make a difference. Thank you.
Not really. Just expires in 20 days.
Sleep here.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, divide by four, that's even, right on top of things.
It never said the last day of February.
Good numbers.
Yes.
Now that, done with a lot of other things.
Any other suggestive changes? We could do the, do you wanna do the town, no, let me see.
Would you wanna do 6:30 on the...
You could.
On the same date?
Yep, 6:30 on the 19th.
What, 19?
Okay.
Or do a public hearing?
Oh.
It's a town meeting, actually.
Town meeting.
You, we're doing it in June?
Uh, no, January 19.
Oh, okay.
Half hour before the middle one.
Oh, you mean it's, okay, that's what you're saying. I'm sorry. 6:30.
And if there's any change, I'll let you know. But we'll schedule that.
All right, so...
Hiring unforeseen circumstances from the Y. So did we get a vote on that?
I don't think we voted yet, but...
Is there a motion?
I'll make, I'll move the motion to have the hearing on the 19th.
The town meeting.
Town meeting.
On the 19th of January at 6:30.
As amended.
As amended.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Lou, seconded by Brett. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. The next item is the Swedish cemetery land matter. I have maps. I know how much you all kind of enjoy maps. Verbally, I'm gonna have Lou explain to you what the, what the request is, 'cause he's very familiar.
Well, there is a strip of land on High Street that seems to be the town land, but may have been the cemetery land. There are three graves or cemetery plots that are already, with headstones on that property, and it looks like that piece of property belongs to the, to the cemetery. If you go down High Street, there's no jog in the road, the width of the road is the same width of the road all the way down the road, and that piece of land seems like it should belong to the cemetery. But it doesn't. But it doesn't.
I think historically, the street was owned by the state at one point, and when they turned it over to the town, as Lou explained, it really wasn't drawn properly. So this is to clean up what really should be, and this would be, as Lou pointed out, on High Street side, and it's the Swedish cemetery. So everybody can take a look, I've already looked at the maps, and I think Lou has as well.
Yeah, I'll look down, too.
Yeah, the only thing that'll be remaining is the shed will still be...
The shed will be on their land. Do you want the shed on their...
Well, it'll partially be over.
Is it partially?
Which, that happens all the time, I was more worried about the, the...
The graves?
Yeah. I'm okay with, I'm okay with the building over.
The graves are far enough away from the road that there's still a little bit of...
Oh, yeah, no, I can...
Land, you know, a setback land, if you had to extend or enlarge the road.
How wide's the right-of-way there, with this reduction?
It looks like it's about 50 feet wide.
65.2.
It probably mentions it on the map.
Were you seeing that? Oh, yeah.
Swedish cemetery paid for these maps, by the way, they're not on maps.
So, property line is coming back? No, this is where it is today, this is where it is.
The public is welcome to look at the...
So it would move it over, and that would give them the, they would now own the graves. So right now, we own some graves, so... Well, we don't own the graves. They run our property, right? Okay, so we're gonna give them the land, what are we, what are we, we're talking about giving them the land to...
We're straining on a right-of-way.
It's actually straining on a right-of-way.
Yeah, be careful how you word that.
Yeah. We're sort of, and there's... We're correcting an error. There's people buried on that strip. Look at this. And the telco facilities are, is still gonna be in the public right-of-way, so you always gotta make sure.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, that's, I was wondering about that.
And then it goes, goes across the street here, so you wouldn't have a real trespass.
That's actually, this is actually just an anchor pole. You actually have your C L P poles, and 'cause you have this pole, this anchor pole's only... How wide is this strip? Five feet?
Looks good to me. You good?
The process for this is something I need to look into, but I wanted to let you know about this, so that...
It's probably a public hearing, right?
I think so, Ben. It's gonna be, I wanted to do this at maybe the same time we do the exchange club.
You, just so you know, you have to send it to planning and zoning.
Yes, okay.
So get the, whatever you call it, I can't think.
830G or something? No, I don't, no.
No, no.
What is it?
No, no.
We have to get the permission from them, because we're selling town land?
No. Oh, I don't know, well, we're... Correct, but it, there, whenever the town gives away land, leases land, trades land...
It's actually land that will go to them.
So, why can't I think of what it is? We do it, uh...
I know exactly what it is, I just can't think of the name.
Is there a 13 in it? We do it all the time, regardless. You, you know what we gotta do.
Yeah.
If it was, maybe, then that property is 6, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, so I will let you know how to proceed with that, and we'll, maybe what you can do is send it to planning and zoning, make a motion to send this to planning and zoning? I think we should do that, right?
Yep.
Wanna make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Made by Ben, seconded by Mr. Trent.
Ralph's getting offended out of you. Ralph can help. It's further away, it takes longer for the sound to travel.
That's true.
Should we make a referral to planning and zoning for their approval?
Yeah.
It's not a 830G.
Why can't we think of it? What is it? 830G?
830G, yeah. That's the name of the statute. Anytime after 9:30, those numbers kind of...
Yeah, I should, I should remember that, but...
824 is what I think it is.
I think you're right.
Yeah, I think it's an 824.
Yeah. 824 review, it's not even, and they can choose to not even review it, and we, we still...
I think it's an 824.
Yeah, I think that's exactly right.
So, they made a motion to send this matter, Sharon, for, under statute 8-24, for a review by the Planning and Zoning Commission and their opinion, to see if it's in keeping with the POCD.
Exactly. Yep. Did we vote on it?
No.
No. That's where you say...
So discussion?
Oh.
Now I say, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. The next item is for informational purposes. I don't think there's any action tonight, because they have not announced the Small I don't think there's any action tonight because they have not announced the small cities grant application round, but we were approached by some folks that work with homeless people, people who don't have a place to live and it, there's a need in our greater community. This would be a regional approach toward applying for a grant that the state has for this purpose in hiring someone that would work for another agency, that they would help individuals who are homeless access resources and get them into homes. A particular need is on occasion within our school district. There are families that find themselves, for, for whatever reason, homeless and it can be very helpful to have the opportunity to go and speak with others that would help them find homes or find apartments of that nature. So this would not be only Portland, but it would be applied for on our behalf. We would hire a grant writer for this and the grant writer would be paid for by the grant. Before you even get there, you have to have a public hearing. And during the public hearing, people from our community would come and mention maybe other things they would like to see us apply for within the small cities grant. This is one that I would put out there to ask people's opinions and then there's other, perhaps, things they would like to see. There's specific things you can do with small cities money and I'll get you some more information on it once the round of applications is announced by the state. But I wanted to just give you a heads up on this. It seems that Mary Pont feels this was very necessary for our community and I know personally because I've helped many people who don't have homes and finding places is not easy, not easy at all. So that's informational and I'll get you more information as we proceed. The next is refunds of excess payment. Ben, you want to do it tonight?
I'll do the second.
Who wants to make the motions? Don't all jump.
I'll do it, it's good at it.
You have a good system, Jim.
I'm, I'm always fine, it's fine.
Fair enough. Jim?
Sure. All right, I make a motion to refund five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ninety-three cents to Nissan Infinity Limited.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries?
I make a motion to refund the amounts of two hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty-six cents and two hundred and sixty-four dollars and ninety-six cents to Toyota Lease Trust.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries?
I make a motion to refund the amount of eighteen dollars and ninety-seven cents to Kenneth Ravicki.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries?
I make a motion to refund the amounts of seventy-two dollars and forty-eight cents, seventy-eight dollars and fifty-six cents and one hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-four cents to Nissan Infinity Limited.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries?
I make a motion to refund the amount of two hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy-six cents to Edward Price, Edward S. Price.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries?
I make a motion to refund the amount of sixteen dollars and forty-three cents to Jean B. Kelsey.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries?
And finally, I make a motion to refund the amount of one hundred and eighty-four dollars and nine cents to Cab East LLC.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries?
The Kenneth Ravicki had an R in the middle for a middle initial.
Ah, thank you.
No problem.
The next item is status and committee reports.
So I have a few.
Yes.
I'll be quick. Dog exploratory, Dog Park Exploratory Committee did kick off, so, and, and signed their dates, decided what their dates for meeting, at least the first few dates in the new year, talked about some of the things that are in their charge and what they would be doing. So it was a good kickoff, so that started up. Park and Rec, I just wanted, I figured I'd bring this up with Park and Rec is that they are looking at rules and regulations, update, set up rules and regulations with regards to how we handle our parks. And the intent of that is to cover existing parks and obviously to be ready for our new park. So that's a work in progress. With regard to the park itself, I will note that we have, the town has received the playground equipment. The developer has received the splash pad equipment. The septic system seems to be in place, they're finishing that up, I think they have some coverage to do on that. The walls around it are at the very end of the work that has to be done on that, they're finishing that up. And we're currently having the discussion about the, the buildings and whether that work will begin before we're covered with snow or not, so. It's moving along, it's, they're actually, and actually one other thing is there, today we talked about that the, at our regular meeting, that I guess the fencing company would like to start, they'd like to start putting in the fencing as well. That there's, you know, as long as the weather permits, so.
Where, where are we at?
Ralph.
Basketball court.
Oh, go ahead, I'll, then, then jump ahead, go ahead, I'll ask my question.
So with regards to the basketball court, they actually have graded the area for the basketball court. They put top silo on top of it for now because it really comes down to whether there's contingency left to finish the, to do the pavement on it, but it's there, it's, you know, he's, they've graded it and filled it in to be covered for where it would be.
Try your best, I think that'd be a good add-on.
We're, we're trying our best over there.
Thank you.
Where, where, what became of the clay removal and?
So with regards to the clay removal, that was, that was completed actually. And right now, what it is, is there is an area that's near North Hill that seems to be seeping a lot of water, but it's hard to tell anything because we get large amounts of water every two or three days. So they've said, let's just leave it till the, you know, till the spring to see if we could really get a sense of what's flowing out of there, so. So, yeah, the clay remediation has been done.
Okay. Two, two different, two quick things though to add on that, I think is, that are important. We did talk to them about making sure that the seepage from that north hill and making sure that there could not be any impact to the area that was remediated. And the consensus is no, because it was designed, that's what it's designed for, the water. That was a question that had been raised, is if, could it get undermined by water coming out? So we look like we're good there. And the second one that was new today was that we had that ten days, which is the only ten days in the last three months that were relatively dry. They did start to see a reduction in the amount of water that was coming out of the hill and as soon as we got, you know, the heavy rain that we had gotten over the weekend, they saw it come back up again. So what was nice about that, that's an indication that it is something that's being exacerbated by the heavy rain as opposed to what's going to be a perpetual, you know, groundwater problem. So still more to follow and we'll learn more in the spring, but I think we, we learned something with that today.
Yep.
And what about that wetlands issue by the entrance?
Well, I mean, the only thing we talked about was whether we're going to change the nature of the front entrance in terms of whether it was going to be slopes versus walls. For the time being, we're just going to leave them walls, which keeps us within the allowed limit, but not having to approach Army Corps of Engineering about it, so. I mean, it was a pittance that we were going over, but it still would have triggered it. So leaving the original plan and how we're going to do that entrance will forego us having to reach out to them.
And then the, the real big question is are, are we within our budget?
At this point, at this point, we're still good. We, we've talked about some, you know, areas of savings, we've had that discussion as well, though, to make sure if we have to worry about more contingency. So we had a pretty good discussion today that talked about things that we believe that we could change in the facility and still it will not impact anything that the average person is going to even know occurred. So the essence of the facility will not change.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other status or committee reports from anybody? Have a comment?
Public comment.
Formal discussion?
I was just going to ask if next meeting, if Bob has a chance.
Yes.
If he could explain a little more about where he is with his solar installations and his conversations with Ross Solar.
Ben, you had a question about the transfer in terms of any other firm besides Jacobson?
Correct.
And I'll ask Tom.
Add that, add that account number.
Right.
Thank you.
I have nothing on the follow-up at this point, other than I will tell you, and the selectmen are aware of this, but the pipeline on Brownstone Avenue in terms of the potential purchase of that property, the pipeline, as you know, was emptied of the oil, which was of a substantial nature, but the selectmen have said that they want to have a pressure test done on that pipe to make sure there was no additional leakage that could have occurred. So a pressure test would be able to tell us if there's any fissures or any type of areas that maybe had leaked and we weren't aware of. We had a quote from a nitrogen testing company out of Pennsylvania in the ballpark of twenty-eight thousand dollars that we shared with the seller because that pipeline is owned by[1698.16]